I'd like to call this public hearing to order. This public hearing is being held for comments on the 22 tentative budget. There's a sign-in sheet going around. I asked if you have a comment to make. This is not a question and answer. It is comment only to limit it to the budget. If anybody wishes to speak at this point, please stand with your name and the town that you live in and make your comment. I don't believe there's anybody out in the hallway waiting. Are there any comments from the reporters in the back? Jess, do we have anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak?
I'm going to wait for Ann Camber to let us know.
Okay.
I put it in the chat, but nobody is speaking up to make a public comment.
We'll give another 30 seconds. Okay, if no one wishes to speak, I'll declare this public hearing over and I'll call this meeting to order. Please call the roll. Gladstone, Mollay.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Valente.
Here.
Tuthill.
Here.
Axtell.
Here.
Taggart.
Here.
Marshfield.
Here.
Vernal.
Here.
Isel.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Hinckley.
Here.
Kozier.
Here.
Layton.
Here.
Seta. Okay, please join me in the invocation by Mr. Marshfield and pledge to the flag, Mr. Valente.
Dear Lord, please bless the leaders of this county that we may be a people at peace with ourselves and create a blessing to those we serve. Give us the foresight to provide for the needs of our citizens and make wise decisions for well-being of our residents over and above any personal gains. Let all that we do and say spring out of understanding and kind words. We ask a blessing for our 45,000 residents of this county, for the unemployed, for the poor and the neglected, for the oppressed, for victims of addiction, and for those dealing with losses and sorrows. Please bless our families, our children, our agents, our law enforcement, our emergency personnel, and our persons serving in the military. We ask you to protect them, be their teacher and their guide. May we always be mindful in our words and actions of what is best for our great county and our respective 19 towns. This we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the approval of our last meeting's minutes from November 10th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Then they will stand as submitted. We have minutes from two public hearings that we held on November 10th. Were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they will stand as submitted. Communications?
All communications have been referred to the appropriate committees.
Privilege of the floor, Mr. Merrill.
It's my privilege and honor, actually, to present to you the Public Health Director, Mandy Walsh, who wants to speak to us for a couple minutes. She's on Zoom.
I'm going to give a little COVID update on what's been going on and then just talk about some general things that we should think about as we head into some of our holidays and trying to be as safe as we can while we're still enjoying time with our family and friends. So I'm going to share my screen so that I can share a few slides with everyone. All right, so this is our recent, this is our most recent update from yesterday on what's going on in Delaware County related to some of the COVID cases. We reported three deaths yesterday. If anyone's keeping track, if you look at our deaths, we're at 74 cumulative and our positivity rate is 10.37%. I'll talk a little bit about what that kind of means in a minute. We had 70 new positive cases. We have 265 active cases, so people that we are monitoring that are positive. 12 people in the hospital.
Can you pick up a little, please?
Yep, I'm going to see if I can turn my microphone up a little bit more. With the current numbers, the number of people in quarantine, that's lower than we think it is because we've worked very back, everything is backlogged. All counties in New York State are experiencing an influx in cases. So the quarantine calls and some of the tracking numbers with New York State Virtual Call Center, we know that that's a lower number than what we actually have right now in quarantine based on some of the cases that we've identified. So that, those are sort of our numbers and, you know, the positivity rate, when you have these positivity rate is really the total positive tests over the total people tested. So when you look at some of the numbers, there are some larger counties where you might see a slightly lower positivity rate. One of the factors that influences that is the total number of tests that happen on a regular basis. This is a seven-day average. And also, the idea is that when you have a positive, you either have two things. You have still increased transmission because for every single, every single, the proportion of people that are positive over the people that are actually tested is still pretty significantly high. Also, in Delaware County, we don't have as many tests as, you know, Manhattan would. So you do have a little influx there. But usually when your positivity rate is starting to increase, even in a smaller county with less tests, it shows you that there is community transmission and there are some substantial rates of transmission happening in the community. So like I said, there's two factors that, that can play into this, but based on some of the other statistics that we've been looking at and tracking, we know that most likely too, we have folks that are maybe home ill and didn't go get tested. They just stayed home. You know, we think that there's still a lot of under-reporting in illness and so that will also factor into that positivity rate. This is a new chart. We are going to start to do some, once monthly, we're going to be doing some more graphs and charts related to some of the age groups for cases and some of the death statistics. This is a little bit easier to do on a monthly basis, more nitty-gritty because of the way the data and the tracking is. If you look at some of the age groups here too, we're seeing a lot of folks in that midline age group and obviously you're starting to see with some of these new, these other variants, you're seeing younger groups of people that are, you know, that are sick. So we have a variety of variants circulating. Back in July, the Delta variant was quite prevalent pretty much all over New York State and, you know, that's, that is a highly transmissible variant. There are also other versions, there are other variants that are also transmissible. But as you can see, you're sort of looking at, you know, you've got, we've got the 50 to 59, that's a pretty high group of people, but that 20 to 29 years, if you look, the 30 to 39, you know, that midline age group of people, that is also a lot of our, that's a lower proportion of people that are, you know, fully vaccinated. That group tends to be a lower vaccination group. Obviously, some people in the lower age groups only until recently could, could be vaccinated and we still have, you know, children who are under five that can't receive vaccination. So this is sort of just an, just a kind of a clip of what this looks like population-wise. The only thing I wanted to mention is, you know, this concept of herd immunity. So, you know, this, I think this chart is a kind of a nice chart, just to give you sort of a visual of what we're talking about when we look at herd immunity and what's happening. So immunity in general, so when you have a few people who are vaccinated and one person that's infected, you know, the virus can spread quite fast because you only have so many people that have any type of immunity, whether you have the vaccination immunity or you have natural immunity. The more people that are immune, the less you have that spreading and that transmission. When you have lots of people that are vaccinated, or I'll go you one further, if you look at some of our historical diseases where we have people that have survived the disease or they, you know, they have the natural immunity and we have the population of folks like measles, they've, some people have naturally had measles and then the other group has been vaccinated. You have that baseline level of, you have a huge level of herd immunity. So when you do see an outbreak or pockets of cases, you're not seeing massive transmission like you would, you know, if we didn't have that herd immunity. The idea is trying to get up to the herd immunity at the community level so you decrease the transmission. This is just an example related to vaccination, but the idea is that immunity is what's going to kind of make that baseline level and keep that, maintain sort of that status so you don't have those huge increased transmission rates in, at the community level. So when most of the population is immune to an infectious disease, it provides that indirect protection to those people that are not immune because either the vaccine doesn't work for them or they can't get vaccinated or, and you don't really want to throw them into a situation where they have that, they succumb to the natural immunity because maybe they, they don't survive. So the idea is that you're doing herd immunity. It's not completely going to get rid of the disease. Measles is not gone. This is just an example. Like I said, measles is not gone, but you see that we have littler outbreaks, but it's not prevalent all throughout New York State. You're not seeing huge cases of measles cropping up. You do see it in populations of people, especially when you have that non-vaccinated or the non-herd immunity groups of people. So how do you calculate the herd immunity? This is just kind of a simple idea to kind of show you that, you know, you calculate how quickly the pathogen can spread from person to person, how susceptible it is to that population for infecting them, and then what types of behavior are being used to sort of mitigate the spread. And until you get to that herd immunity, you still have to utilize all of these other tools to make that successful because otherwise you just end up in this sort of vicious cycle of transmission. And the problem is, is that with, with COVID, there are so many variants of COVID that, you know, you have people, we have, we are seeing folks, obviously, that have been infected multiple times. They most likely had different variants and you also have vulnerable people that have, that have been infected multiple times and that's really tricky. So this cycle sort of continues. This is our, this is our chart related to the death, the death-related data. So as you can kind of see here, we've broken out what the deaths look like in Delaware County. These are the, pretty much the age ranges currently right now to all of the deaths that we have been tracking. So you have the 50 to 59 group, 60 to 69. If you look, it's mostly 50 and over that are the deaths. We also have a chart that shows you sort of by gender. So you see about 64% are male and 36% are female. And this is just kind of the, this is the CDC. They have sort of how to celebrate holidays, you know. We know that people want to see family members. We know people want to get together. I think the biggest thing is that some people, you know, there are lots of things that go on during Thanksgiving or prior to Thanksgiving, you know, people get together outside of even the home and you have these indoor public settings tend to be a really, really high risk of transmission, especially when you have a high positivity rate in your county or area where telling me that there's still a fair amount of community transmission, it's really easily spread. So case in point, a lot of what we're seeing right now too with households where, you know, before we might've had maybe one person in a household and a bunch of people that are, you know, that they're being quarantined and that person is ill, but maybe some people are quarantined and they don't become ill. We're seeing whole households where over the course of three to five days, the entire household is becoming infected. So you have a household of eight people and by the time all is said and done, they are all positive. So the transmission is just a lot more virulently. It's easier to transmit with some of these, some of these other variants. So it's making the community spread a lot quicker. So even if you're fully vaccinated during high rates, we are considered a substantial rate of transmission if you look at the CDC data and the way that they categorize this New York State and CDC. So our area would be considered substantial. So when you are in that, that window, the idea is that if you're in a public setting, even if you're vaccinated, the idea is that you want to, you want to still consider wearing your masks in those public settings because you are going to now interact with a bunch of people that you don't typically share a home or, or, you know, that network with and you don't know who could potentially be, be ill. And the transmission is very, it's much easier to transmit. Obviously outdoors is safer than indoors. So, you know, some of the hunting crew, when they're outside, you know, that's a really good time to have your fresh air and, and, you know, you're not having that issue. It's getting colder, so it's a lot harder to do things outdoors on a regular basis. So this is where we start to, even last year, you know, we were seeing transmission happening and it was started, the cases were starting to go up. I can tell you that right now, our case level is, is quite high. It's almost as high as it was after Christmas last year this time and it sort of continues. So we anticipate that we're going to have more cases, obviously, after Thanksgiving and we haven't even hit Christmas and New Year's yet and some of those other, you know, religious holidays. So, you know, the idea is still trying to avoid a lot of crowded spaces. Things are open now. Lots of events are happening. There are lots more things going on. You have lots of movement of people. And, you know, if you're sick and you have symptoms, maybe don't host a gathering or attend one if you're not feeling well because you never know who's going to be at that gathering that might be more susceptible. You might have an older person, you know, that has medical conditions or someone else that has, a young person that has medical conditions. We are seeing some transmission between families, you know, where some of, you know, it's not always, the outcome isn't, isn't great for some folks and they're ending up very, very seriously ill in the hospital. And then some people are, obviously, don't, don't come out of the hospital. So, you know, these are just some things to consider when, you know, if you do have that, the stuffy nose, you're just not quite feeling well, you know, should I go over to that gathering or maybe I should just stay home? So we ask that you consider that when you're interacting with family and we know that people want to get together and enjoy their families, you know. Get tested if you have symptoms or if you're having close contact with someone. This is really pretty critical anymore because a lot of the household contacts, especially spouses, tend to be, with some of these variants, the transmission is extremely high and it's really, really easy to transmit that and we're, you can see that with, you know, with our tracking. If you're gathering with multiple people and people are traveling, you know, the idea of avoiding some of the crowds and, you know, people traveling maybe from other states, just testing or taking a check on yourself before you now go from one place to another because you just, you don't know. And again, if you're not feeling well, really consider kind of who you're going to interact with and how, what you're going to do. If you're going to be traveling in general on airfare or other things, the CDC has a lot of travel recommendations so that you can try to stay healthy and follow some guidelines to just keep safe. So that's sort of my update and my kind of spiel in a nutshell. I didn't know if the board had any, you know, specific questions that they wanted to ask or if there are any comments.
I would like to just make a comment. Thank you, Mandy, for all you've been doing and continue to do. The governor's office called a Zoom meeting with the county executives in our region on Sunday. The takeaway, and I've told a couple of the committees today, a couple of the takeaways that I got from that meeting is there's a really strong possibility that the governor will mandate vaccination across the board. We, one of the questions that we asked was, would the counties be told ahead of time? Would we have some advance notice? And they, they couldn't promise that. So that tells me that that's, that's the way that I think they're, they're thinking of going. I know that this is a real concern. We've had so many deaths and so many positives. We almost feel like we've gotten calloused from that last year, but we really are seeing a real spread in this. We have a conference call this afternoon, Mandy and I, with the governor's office again on looking for ways to stop the, the spread of this. Any ideas on how to help the state? So I appreciate, Mandy, your comments and keeping the board so informed as you do. Does anybody have any questions for Mandy?
What did you say, Lou? Our vaccination rate is now?
What is it, 50, around 53%? Mandy?
Thank you for reminding me. Our vaccination rate as of yesterday was 53.2%.
Yeah. Mandy, I want to thank you as well and I've tried to promote this before and, but I'm here to tell you right now that my wife and I just got off COVID and I'm here to tell you if she was, had not been vaccinated, she'd be one of the 70-some deaths. She was that bad. And, you know, the only way to, is to get vaccinated. I mean, we got our booster. She probably had COVID at the time she got her booster. She thought she had a bad cold and she asked them, can I get a booster with a bad cold? And they said, yeah, you can get it. So they, but she had, it was three or four days later, I took her to the emergency room and then she tested positive. And it, she'd been very, very sick and that was always something I feared was that she would get COVID, but she got it when as a vaccinated person. So that was fortunate for us. But it's out there, it's real and I talk to families all the while that it's run through their families and it'll get through everybody. I'm confident of that. So vaccinations are the way to go. Thank you again for all you do. And there's a lot more will be expected of you, I'm sure, the way things are going.
So I have a question for the council. Tina was talking about the governor's office is going to come out with some, some dictum that says we all have to be vaccinated. They can't mandate that.
I think that's the way they're going.
Can they? I mean, other states have problems with this, but yes, they're suing the feds. I don't know.
That's what's going to happen.
You can't mandate someone to take a shot.
They do it all the time. Kids have to be vaccinated to go to school.
Home school. Home school, right? It's crazy. They got, they got, they have the strongest immune system and they want to vaccinate them all.
Who's that?
Children.
I'm not going to play doctor, so I can't say yes or no.
Are there any other comments or questions from Mandy?
Thank you for all the work you have done, too, and I think Laura feels that too, and I hope that all the time that have you put in and I thank you for your effort.
Okay, thank you, Mandy.
Thank you very much. Have a nice Thanksgiving, everyone.
Same to you. Okay, are there any standing committee reports? Mr. Seta.
Just the behavioral health facility, pre-planned ribbing cutting has been moved. It will not be in December. We're going to wait and reschedule this.
I think that's wise.
Up and running?
Yes, it is up and running.
Okay, are there any other standing committee reports? Then we'll move on to resolutions. Start with resolution number 175.
I'll bring that up when we're put to adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, Acceptance of Early Voting Expansion, Grant Board of Elections.
Self-explanatory, I think.
Okay, please call the roll. Mollay.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Valente.
Yes.
Tuthill.
Yes.
Axtell.
Yes.
Taggart.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Vernal.
Yes.
Isel.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hinckley.
Yes.
Kozier.
Yes.
Layton.
Yes.
Seta.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 176.
I bring this up when we're put to adoption.
Second.
Year-end accounting modifications to the 2021 Budget, Department of Fiscal Affairs.
Questions? So voiceful, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. Resolution number 177.
I bring 177 up when we're put to adoption.
Direct town tax.
Please call the roll. Mollay.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Valente.
Yes.
Tuthill.
Yes.
Axtell.
Yes.
Taggart.
Yes.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Vernal.
Yes.
Isel.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hinckley.
Yes.
Kozier.
Yes.
Layton.
Yes.
Seta.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 178.
I bring this up when we're put to adoption.
Second.
Designation of Delaware County Chamber of Commerce's Tourism Promotion Agency for Delaware County for 2022, Department of Economic Development.
Just a comment on the TPA, the Tourism Promotion Agency. They've been doing a really excellent job for us. I think what I'm particularly fond of is they're very fluent in the internet community where our target market resides. They're more and more going to websites and news places rather than picking up paper pamphlets and things like that. Two new initiatives came out, one to get a good, accurate inventory of our short-term rental and another is to have a list of agents that will get us articles on these various websites that are our target market frequently. As you all know, tourism has been through the roof and we had an excellent year again. Each year exceeding our expectations. And I just feel that since they're such a big part of tourism, tourism promotion, you have to grant some credit to them to that TPA. They're doing a good job, so I'm fully endorsing reassigning TPA to the Chamber of Commerce.
In light of this decision, I do have some comments to make. First and foremost, I want to make sure everyone understands the important role of the Tourism Promotion Agency in Delaware County. Delaware County's economy is diversified and includes agriculture, natural resource development, industry, retail, and of course, tourism. Restrictions imposed on development to protect the New York City watershed makes traditional industrial development in nearly half of this county more challenging, giving tourism an even greater role in the county for revenue, jobs, and small business opportunities. The IDA and economic development have made substantial investments in tourism-based businesses in recent years that has resulted in a measurable growth in the value tourism plays in our local economy. This board supported these efforts when we passed the bed tax a few years ago, allowing for those funds to be used for new investments in economic development and tourism throughout Delaware County. The infusion of these dollars along with the popularity of Airbnb and other vacation rental sites made the role of the county TPA even more important to encourage visitors to come here versus other upstate destinations. For many years, the TPA was actually a staff person hired by the chamber and paid for using the county allocation to the chamber. That local relationship was very successful as the individual staff person had direct contact with the county economic development office as well as the oversight committees and board of supervisors' office. This allowed for coordination and a greater understanding of how the TPA was serving the county. However, under the current chamber administration, that direct contact has waned and the relationship between the chamber and the county has deteriorated. The county leaders have seen less cooperation from chamber administration and little has been willingly shared about how county dollars are being expended. The county's economic development oversight committee has requested this information on several occasions, receiving unsatisfactory reports with little to no explanation or cooperation. This ultimately prompted the committee to authorize an audit of the chamber programs and books, which has recently been completed. Over the past two years, Delaware County has attempted to create a working relationship with the current chamber president that would allow for candid conversations and an open dialogue regarding the chamber responsibilities and the county's expectations of our TPA. As the Tourism Promotion Agency and the importance of tourism as part of our local economy, it was felt this relationship needed to have more transparency and oversight. Unfortunately, this was met with defensiveness and defiance from the president, who has on several occasions used his position to make disparaging remarks about the county It goes without saying, I am deeply disappointed by the response we have received from chamber president, especially in light of our attempts to correct the issues and address our concerns. It is my opinion, the damage done is irreparable, and the relationship we once shared is no longer affected. I hope as we move forward with a new TPA, we can continue to see new investments in tourism throughout the county. Because of this, I will be voting no to this resolution. Are there any other comments before we call the roll? Mr. Davis?
Well, Tina, you took most of mine, but, you know, I'm on the committee as well. February, I made the comment on the record, started a lot of this by saying, there's no way that all the money given last year could have been spent with the governor's executive director. You can't. There just simply was no way in my mind. So what I said was, I'd like to know what kind of money is left over so we can claw that back through the contract that we have with you, and then the county can reappropriate that out to help the businesses right after kosher that are desperate to use. I spoke with Amy about our contract, how to look at it, make sure there's a clawback clause in. There was no open dialogue in my mind, in my perception of this. There was no one sitting down saying, hey, Pat, here's the books, we have free funds, there's $139,000 left over, here's how it's broke up, here's why it's here, and here's what we want to do with it. That didn't happen, and that's what I would expect any committee, anyone we work with would do that, from any supervisor that would ask that question on how tax dollars were spent. Yeah, at the end of this, you know, I was there last week at the meeting when Glenn read the audit report, he got to the end, there's $139,000 left over. Let's remember some, guys, that's what I was asking for in the first place. And the whole idea that I was asking it was so we could legally claw it back through the contract that we had through a provision we put in there so we could reappropriate that. And instead, in my mind, we were stonewalled for about eight to nine months. And then when this audit got read, my statement, I had the audit right here, I actually made notes on it, my statement was, well, now wait a second, there's $139,000 left over. Did the chamber spend this money in the first six months of this year? Yes, we did. And you submitted it in financial reports? Yep. Well, I didn't know that. So I don't do business like that. I've been doing business for a long time, from the south to the north, even outside of this country. And I'm not interested in doing business like that. That's my first problem. My second problem, my second issue, is that we should never come in here and say we need to end something, I have a better option. Going through this process, the silver lining is that we found out that there are other options. I have no problem telling all of you for six years, I've been on the record multiple times a year, saying you do not have the right to give anyone this contract that goes beyond the county's procurement policy. You don't have the right to hand over tax dollars without going out to RFP. It's beyond your county procurement policy. We all have them in every town. You don't have a right. And I was challenged every time, and I was told, there's no other entity in this county that's capable of doing these services and providing this to the county. And for six years, I've told this. Well, now, as a result of this, I can tell you that advertising firms in this county that are capable of doing this, and they really would look forward to working with the county on this, or any portion of it they could, and if we would ever put this out to RFP, we would know that. And that goes without saying, we should have done that. That's my other reason. The third one is mine in my mind, and this is just mine, you take it for what it is. I've been supervisor for six years. In the last two elections, the chairman of the Delaware County Chamber of Board Directors was running against me, unseat. And now, in this past election, the secretary of the chamber is running against Joe Seaton and Walton won't seat him. And I guess there's not a problem with the Delaware County Chamber being a political recruiting agency to unseat sitting supervisors, but I can tell you that you better not ask me to support it if that's what you're doing. And I don't think it's a problem in doing that, I think it's a problem most being a contract man. That's what I think is a problem. So there are my three reasons why I will vote no on this resolution, in my feelings. Thank you, Clarence.
Any other comments?
I do have a comment. I've talked to economic development and IDA, and they're in favor of this. As far as Pastorella and Lilian running against you and Seta, that would happen before this term. That was nothing new on this term. And I talked to Bud last night, because there was a letter broken around that there was a business not too happy about it, and he supports us, even though he's not here today and his vote won't count. So I support it and where I sit. To me, economic development and IDA support it, wholeheartedly.
Just two points to clear up. And first of all, Glenn Neal, there are very strict requirements for who can and cannot be a TPA. And according to Glenn's research, the two options are Chamber of Commerce or the economic development office itself, and that would be the backup. The economic development agency will take on the role of the TPA. It's the only other option we feel we have at this time to do that. So we'll be put into that office, which they'll handle it, but they're already overworked like every other agency, turning this tough time. The other thing is, the chamber does give regular reports that lead the economic development committee meetings. And if you're there for most of the meetings, you not only get the reports, but you have an opportunity to question the reports, and I've always found it to be a bit common. So I'll take responsibility as chairman of the economic development committee for not bringing these reports to the committee as a whole, because I feel, as a member of the committee, and I'm well informed, a lot of the money we're talking about that's left over is not quite that simple. There are programs out there like film permission, things that got stalled that were funded. A lot of this funding, mostly, comes directly from the tourism advisory. So it is county collected taxes, but it goes through a different stream now. We ultimately approve it here, but it's the tourism advisory that came up with these various programs, and they're all excellent programs, and they've all worked. So we're getting a bang for our buck, and it's showing in the outcome of the numbers. So, I mean, if you want to put this one, because economic development, okay, we've got enough to do, but we're going to handle it, we'll carry it.
Mr. Seta?
Yes, I just, you know, based on some of the negative comments made at certain events brought to my attention by elected officials at the state level, you know, I've lost confidence in the way that that organization's been managed over the last couple of years, so I'm not in favor of this at all.
Okay, Mr. Isel?
Yeah, so the chair mentioned the disparaging comments that was in the press, and I, I have a real issue with the executive director or president, whatever he is, when he circulated a, a letter supporting this cannabis law. I don't like the way it was handled within the chamber, his executive committee voted on that, I believe it's a 15-member committee. I think it should have went to the entire membership, because I don't think it's something the chamber should be involved in or supporting. Don't want these lounges around our county, however, I, I can see this happening, but it just, just burned me that he would take a position like that for the sake of business and business alone. It's just, it was just wrong, and I'll be voting no on this today, too.
I'm new on the committee, and I was happy to see the results of the audit that the committee asked for. And in the meantime, in the past week or 10 days, I've gotten numerous emails, phone calls, messages sent to me to support the change.
Okay, please call the roll. Molay?
No.
Merrill?
No.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
No.
Axtell?
No.
Taggart?
No.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
No.
Isel?
No.
Haynes?
No.
Scott?
No.
Ellis?
No.
Davis?
No.
Hinckley?
No.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
No.
Seta?
No.
Okay. Mr. President, thank you for your service. Okay, we have two not pre-fileds. I'll waive rule 10 without objection. And I will bring up resolution number 179.
I'd like to bring 179 to table and ask for approval. Taggart?
Apportionment of county self-insurance budget.
Questions? Please call the roll. Molay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 180.
I bring this up in move with adoption. Second.
Levy of town accounts. Questions? Please call the, whoop. Mr. Vernal?
We have them for the truck.
Stumpage tax.
Pardon?
You got stumpage tax.
Yeah.
I can give you the breakdown later on, after the meeting, if you'd like. Okay, please call the roll. In layman's terms.
Yes, always. We get them every year.
Okay, please call the roll. Molay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 181.
I bring this up in move with adoption. Second.
Payment of audit. Please call the roll. Molay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Oh, yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
No.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
No.
Isel?
No.
Haynes?
No.
Scott?
No.
Ellis?
No.
Davis?
No.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
No.
Okay. Mr. President, thank you for your service. Okay, we have two not pre-fileds. I'll waive rule 10 without objection. And I will bring up resolution number 179.
I'd like to bring 179 to table and ask for approval. Taggart?
Apportionment of county self-insurance budget. Questions? Please call the roll. Molay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 183.
I bring 183 up in move with adoption. This is for apportionment, apportion, appropriation resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Appropriation resolution. Please call the roll. Molay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?